Neil School District School Board Committee of the Whole Meeting, Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. Mrs. Rouge, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brancato.
Here.
Mrs. Crowson.
Present.
Mr. Ginthart.
Here.
Mr. Godixon.
Present.
Mr. Hartline.
Present.
Mrs. Lynch. Dr. McGuire.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
And Mr. Sadowski.
Here.
We have eight members present.
Thank you.
We stand for the pledge of allegiance, and if we could just stand for a moment of silence for the people dealing with the hurricane in Jamaica. Thank you. Announcements? I don't have any announcements. Dr. Lucabal, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brancato and members of the board and community. Rookie mistake. Thank you, Mrs. Brancato and members of the board and community. As we celebrate Principal Appreciation Month, I want to take a moment to shine a light on some of the most dedicated leaders in the Centennial School District, and that's our principals. And I can tell you that we're incredibly fortunate to have such a talented and committed group of educational leaders here in our district. Every conversation leaves me impressed and appreciative of their work serving our children. Every day, our principals walk through their school doors, ready to make a positive impact. They set tone, build relationships, and create spaces where students feel seen, valued, and capable of achieving great things. Our principals shape the culture of their schools, guiding with compassion, leading with vision, and balancing countless challenges with grace and optimism. Their work often happens behind the scenes, but its impact is felt in every classroom, every student's success story, and every teacher who feels supported and inspired. So tonight, we want to pause and thank our principals for their leadership, commitment, and the care they pour into their school communities every single day. And at this time, we'd like to play a video that celebrates our incredible principals and the difference they make across our district. And as we're queuing up that video, I also want to thank Mr. Sanchez Peralta for his work in putting that video together. And also, while this video features our principals, we have not forgotten about our assistant principals. In April, there is Assistant Principal Recognition Week, and so we'll be back with some more. So without further ado, Mr. Sanchez, if you can play the video.
My journey to becoming a principal is a bit unique. When I was looking to pursue my master's degree, I originally wanted to go into special education. My principal at the time really encouraged me to go into educational leadership because he said he saw something in me that he really wanted me to pursue educational leadership. And I'm really glad that I listened to him. I think that leadership is something unique where it's something that other people see that in you. I don't think that leadership or principalship or supervisory roles are something that you should do on your own. I don't think that anyone should say, you know, I'm a leader and I'm going to do this. I think it's really something that you see in others, and when you see signs of leadership in others, you should really share that with them. You should celebrate that about other people. He told me that he saw light in me, that he saw leadership skills in me, that I was strong with relationships and strong with problem solving. And I was really glad that I listened to him. I've been very fortunate with my career as a dean of students, as an assistant principal and a principal. And I'm really excited to continue my journey as a leader.
So my path to the principalship was very different than some principals. I never saw myself, when I was in high school, wanting to go to more school. And my folks, my parents and I laugh about this now, that, you know, I was the first to go to college in my family, I was the first doctor in my family. And I would have probably been the least likely, if you would ask back in 1989, when I was in high school, that I'd be sitting here today as a principal at William Tenet High School. So my path, I really owe to many people along the way, especially those that were my supervisors when I was in the classroom. I think they identified some key leadership abilities and helped me hone those skills to become the leader I am today. So I'm very humbled to be able to be the leader here at William Tenet High School, and I'm very thankful for those that I get to work with every day.
So I decided to become a principal. It was a decision I made as early as my student teaching experience. I've always loved working with students, of course, that's why I'm in education. But in my student teaching experience, I worked with a really inspiring principal. He created an environment in the building that was very kind of family-type of environment, and that was the kind of principal that I knew that one day I would want to date. So here I am now, it's my fourth year as principal at McDonald Elementary School.
I love education, and I love building systems and supporting teaching and learning in the broadest way possible. So becoming a principal actually made a lot of sense to me. I love the growth we see in students and being able to impact that from my position alongside great teachers and staff was a natural fit.
My favorite thing about being a principal is spending time with students. One of the greatest things about my job is that I get to spend all day having fun with middle schoolers. So I'm in classes, I'm in hallways, I'm in cafeteria, games, I'm in events, and just spending time with people. They really despise my horrible dad jokes, but it's so much fun annoying them and being part of their journey through middle school. This time is really difficult for a lot of our students. I think for every student in middle school, it's rough times working through who you are and becoming who you're going to be. But being part of that is really incredible, and part of that journey with our students is what makes this job so incredible.
I like the organizational and communicative part of the job. I'm a planner by nature, and I like ensuring that everyone knows what's going on and what's expected of them. Also, as a principal, I get to interact with everyone: students, parents, staff, faculty, the community, aides, everyone that's in touch with the school and even just on the outside of it. I get to attend events. I have a lot of say what the events are and how we're going to prepare them and what we're going to get out of them. So I really enjoy that part of it as well. And I learn so much from everyone that I'm involved with. I get to share this information with others as well. I've seen so many outstanding lessons in the classroom and met so many special people in my career. I feel really lucky to have had that opportunity. I'm able to identify strengths that I see in people. I'm able to identify their ideas, their best qualities, and then share this with other people, help them become better teachers, help students to have, you know, ideas of what they'd like to do and how to deal with different situations that they find themselves in. And I also pride myself on being very practical and pragmatic, and I feel like this position lends itself well to those qualities.
The favorite part of being a principal is interacting with our staff and students every day. I get to see all the fun things and get involved with all the amazing ideas that we get to implement here at Davis. And it's just an amazing part of the job, being able to see those things take shape, to problem solve alongside our amazing staff and to make an impact.
My favorite part of being a principal is the students. Just seeing their smiling faces every day, knowing that they're growing each day, they're learning each day, and seeing how they really thrive, especially now that I've been in education a long time and running into my former students who are now in their 30s and finding out from them what kind of impact I've had in their lives, whether it's as a teacher or as a principal. It's the most rewarding part of the job.
I think the thing that I appreciate and love the most about being the principal here at William Tenet High School is that every day I come to work, it's not pre-planned. Like, I can never say to anybody I know what my day is going to bring. I can surely look at my calendar and say I have a meeting or I'm meeting, you know, with the superintendent or I might have a meeting with some community people. But I can't ever share with anybody what my day is really going to be like. And it's very unpredictable, but at the same time, very rewarding. And I think that's what keeps me really invested and wanting to, you know, get up every day and come in here and work as hard as I can.
My favorite part about being in this role at Centennial is that it is new. It's fresh. We have so many great opportunities for new beginnings. Coming to Willadale, we started with a brand-new administration team. We have a brand-new superintendent at a central office here at Centennial. Our central office is transforming and changing, and that's a positive. We have to look at it through an optimistic lens. It's a great opportunity for us to come together as a district community to make the changes that we want. Some things need to stay if they were working, and if they're not, we need to move forward for the growth of our entire school community. I look at this as a fantastic opportunity to come in and work together with our entire faculty, staff, parents, students, administration team to work collaboratively to make the changes that we need to do.
The advice I would give any new principal is to really get to know people, to take the time to just ask questions and get to know them, not just on a professional level, but of a personal level. Who are they? What type of family do they have? Do they have a dog? What are their hobbies? Once you get to make that connection, whether it's with students, parents, colleagues, it really makes it more of a community seal in the building.
So over the course of my career, I've been very fortunate. I've been able to mentor, you know, teachers and assistant principals about their path maybe to a principalship or to become a building leader. And the one advice I always give them is that it takes time. If you really want to do this well, I think that you need as much experience as possible in education altogether. So whether that's as a teacher or as an assistant principal. But like I say to people all the time, I'm learning still every day. So the advice that I would give people is that you have to acknowledge the fact that you're always learning, and you have to accept the fact that you don't know everything, and that you need to be vulnerable to the fact that you don't have all the answers all the time.
I would remind you and reiterate how challenging and rewarding leadership is. Every day, it's problem-solving, it's supporting people with what they need most, and coming to solutions that make sense not only for the school, but more importantly, for our students and families. The work is hard, but you take an empathetic lens, and that's probably the most important lens we take because it's a people business. So keeping people first in mind and making sure that we're solving problems in that way, folks, is the number one key ingredient.
All right. So thinking about advice to somebody who wants to become a principal just getting into this job is you've chosen the right job. You've chosen the right path. If this is something you're passionate about doing, the work is nothing. Love what you do, and you'll love every moment of it. You get to do so many different things with so many different people, and you'll love every moment of it. So have fun.
So I think just watching that, you get a sense of how fortunate we are in our community. And, you know, as someone who's relatively new to our district, I have been so incredibly impressed with the quality of our principals in our district. I really want the board to know that and take great confidence in that they care about students, they care about their staff. They are very results-oriented, but they put people first, and I see this every single day. And it's been just incredibly impressive. We're very grateful. I know we have Mr. Osnick here tonight, who's going to be accepting something from the United Way, but just thank you to them. And just rest assured that we have the right people in the right positions and a very, very strong team. So thank you so much. All right. Next piece I have for you all. As part of the United Way of Bucks County's Tools for School campaign, the United Way of Bucks County entered donors into a drawing to pick a Bucks County public school of their choice to donate $500 to. And Deborah Berger was one of the winners, and she has selected Davis Elementary School. And so tonight, I believe, do we have our U.R. United Way folks coming in? All right, fantastic. Welcome. If you want to come on, come on over. And we have, I believe, Ms. Lisa Matthews and Blair Goff who are here to... So take it away.
Yeah, absolutely. So our Tools for School program started as Stuff the Bus. It was a campaign to collect donations of backpacks, school supplies. But as we have evolved, we realized that children need more than that to succeed. They need, you know, good-fitting clothes. They need wonderful teachers. They need wonderful principals, which, you know, is why we're here tonight. So yeah, as part of our drawing, we wanted to present this check for $500. And that's all. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I do want to say thank you to the United Way and for just all of your support for public education. We're going to be putting this to good use, supporting kids through a PBIS program, and then supporting teachers through our initiative this year to support our climate and culture in the building. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. All right. Back to you, Mrs. Brancato.
The next portion is public comments, and we don't have any. Okay. Mr. Godixon, you're up.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. 2.1, October 28th, 2025, committee of the whole agenda. As per the attached, are there any corrections that need to be made that are allowed by PA law? Second by Mrs. Sadowski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes eight, nothing. Moving on to new business. We have seven items. Can we move them all together? This is what I'm hearing. We'll take that, you know, separately. All right. Be advised that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 3.1, approves the personnel agenda, including resignations, authorization to employ, leave of absence, change of status, and co-curriculars, clubs, activities, as per attached. 3.2 accepts the donation of $500 from the United Way of Bucks County through the Tools of School Campaign to approve the school supplies and essential resources to Davis Elementary School students, as we just heard. 3.3 approves the New Hope Academy Touration Agreement for the 2025-2026 school year for student 18-7. District costs not to exceed $42,933. 3.4 approves the renewal of the MOU with the Bucks County Community College to continue offering dual enrollment courses at a reduced tuition rate for the 25-2026 school year. Bucks County Community College will be offered at a cost of $390 per course and will be offered online. 3.5 approves the renewal of the Dual Enrollment Agreement between the Centennial School District and Gwinnett Mercy University to continue offering courses at a cost of $400 per course and will be offered at William Tenet High School. Skipping 3.6. 3.7 approves the memorandum of understanding with the Centennial Education Association, CEA, to increase the maximum monthly buy-up option for long-term disability insurance from $6,000 to $7,000. This is an optional benefit for members of the CEA and at no additional cost to the district. Second by Mr. Ginthart. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes eight, nothing. Lastly, 3.6 approves the revised job description for the Safety and Security Coordinator as per attached. Thank you. Sadowski and Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Godixon. I read through this. I have three questions primarily regarding this. Number one, why is it necessary? Under the description we got, it was to focus to attract candidates with a police officer background. Well, we had someone with a police officer background, a very good one, I might add, that we attracted with the job description that we currently have. So I don't know, number one, why it was necessary to change it. Number two, I have a question of who compiled this, whether we wrote this independently or whether it was copied from someone elsewhere. In reading through it, there's 28 tasks that this new person is expected to do. Superman couldn't do the 28 tasks that are listed on this job description for someone to do. And it's very unrealistic, I think, to expect someone to accomplish or be able to do all 28 things that are listed for this person to be able to do. And I further gather, since this is budget-neutral, we're going to expect whoever it is to do it at the same salary that we were paying Mr. Burns. So there are my three questions regarding this particular item. Thank you very much.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Martin. I'm certainly happy to address that and if anybody else would like to speak to that as well. So first of all, I'll go in reverse order, if that's okay. As far as the bullet points, a lot of our job descriptions, and if you look at our job descriptions in the district, they're very comprehensive. And it lists all the things that a person, you know, might be within the scope of our responsibility. So if you look at existing job descriptions, they are extremely thorough. And that does not mean that that person has to accomplish in every single order all of those things. But those are some of the many things that might fall into the scope of responsibility. And some of those things may be very minor. They may be something that a person might do in a matter of minutes. They might be something that could come across their plate in time. And so the purpose of just adding a comprehensive And so the purpose of just adding a comprehensive list is just to try to encompass all the things that may, that may fall into someone's job description on any given day of any given week in the year. And so it's not something where that person has to have a checklist and say, yes, I will be doing all the following 28 things. It's just for that comprehensive nature. And if you look at a lot of our descriptions, they're similarly organized in that, in that way. As far as police officer background, and I may defer actually to Mr. Ginhardt because he has a, has a career in law enforcement. One of the things that, that we want, and as you can see in the job description, is we do want someone with a law enforcement background, with a criminal justice background or related degree. Often these positions attract retired law enforcement or those who are no longer actively in law enforcement. And because of the Act 120 cert, and when you retire, my understanding is, is that Act 120 cert, unless you maintain it, goes away. And sometimes that Act 120 cert can be an impediment for a retired person, a law enforcement, who still wants to work and still wants to serve and still wants to keep students and staff safe from applying to a job because of that. I don't know if, Mr. Ginhardt, if you want to share some, some background, given your, your law enforcement experience?
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, being a retired police officer, I have some insight into this. When we first did this, you know, the idea was get a police officer into the building. We want to have the ability to defend our students, build from that. Great idea, but it turns out, after having this be in place for a while, that as Dr. Lukaba said, this is much more of a management position than a hands-on, day-to-day, going to every school operation. That can, we can hire people to do that. We can hire retired police officers to be in buildings or to go to buildings. We really need someone who is very adept and qualified and experienced at basically running a department, because we, with our security guards, and if we want to hire more, we basically have a mini department. So we need somebody with experience in running a department, managing personnel, managing safety, knowing the emergency management aspect of it, knowing things like what's required in the job description is the NIMS and training and the command structure training, all things that not every police officer has. Typically, those things, you get good at that, you get additional training, you get additional experience. When you get up to the command levels, lieutenant, deputy chief, chief, they're the people, that type of person is the person that we want for this job, who has that ability to bring all that knowledge and experience to bear, set up a good emergency management plan, set up a good defense strategy, manage an entire department of security personnel. The problem we face with our position, written the way it is, is because it requires, now requires the Act 120, which is active police officer certification. You need to be an actively employed police officer and you have to maintain all the continuing education to keep that certification. Once you retire, you lose all that. So that narrows, considerably narrows our candidate pool to active police officers. The problem is that in this large area that encompasses our district and where we draw from, the starting salary of a patrol officer, just the starting base salary is higher than we can afford to pay for this position. You add in street overtime, you add in court overtime, they're making a lot of money. When you get up to the lieutenant, deputy chief, chief area, they're making so much money, we can't even begin to compete with that. So by removing the Act 120 certification requirement, which means all we're doing is saying, we want someone that's more management, more big picture focused, but you don't need to be an active police officer, that doesn't mean we're not going to get retired police officers. As a matter of fact, we're going to attract them because now we can attract somebody who's retired. We can attract a retired lieutenant, a retired deputy chief, retired chief, someone who has a wealth of knowledge and experience in doing exactly what we need them to do, but they're retired, so they don't have their 120. But being retired with a pension, the money we're going to pay them is a nice amount of extra money. It's a lot of extra icing on the cake for their retirement. And what police officer is not going to want to take a job defending children? So I, I think by doing this, it's going to greatly expand our potential candidate pool. We're going to get the best possible people. Now, if someone who's an active police officer wants to do this job, and they fit the criteria and they're great, we can hire them. It doesn't say they can't be a police officer, it just says that it's not required to be actively certified. So we're going to get to pick from a much broader range and the pool, the talent pool we're going to pull from is going to be immense. Does that answer your question?
No.
Okay.
What if, what if, what if the person doesn't have a bachelor's degree in one of those subjects or a master's degree? I, I was very happy with the gentleman we had who moved on, unfortunately, from, we hired him under the existing job description. And the fact that we have detailed job descriptions, this one is just, you're not, I don't know who you're going to fight at this.
Well typically when, when people move up through the chain of command and they get that rank, they, they start going to school, they get the advanced degrees, they go to the FBI school, they get all kinds of advanced training. So a lot of people will have these advanced degrees.
This says they have to have.
It's preferred, it's preferred. They don't have to have it, it's, it's preferred. If that person happens to have it, but as Mr. Ginhardt did say, you know, obviously if we, if we-
A master's degree is preferred if you read it.
I'm reading it and it-
Does masters preferred? Doesn't say the others preferred.
H2, is that where you're looking?
Yes, ma'am. Under education.
Yes, I see.
Says masters preferred, that's what it says. There's a period after field, so it doesn't say the other is preferred, it just says that's a requirement.
If we have a-
Plus experience, five to seven years, plus supervising school personnel, whatever. This is, I don't know the reason we have to change it. That's all period. And, and I don't know about the salary, keep it a salary the same and ask your salary it's going to be. Good, have a job. Okay.
Well, somebody, no, somebody, no, it's, it's an excellent, it's a good question, Mr. Martin, and it, it doesn't preclude someone from being hired if they don't have that. Those are preferred degrees, obviously, because that, that brings experience and expertise to the district. But what this does do, to Mr. Ginhardt's point, is it deepens our pool of applicants. As an example, with the existing position, there were some excellent, excellent candidates out here who were retired police officers, who were very interested in the position, but because they weren't actively certified because of their retirement, they weren't able to apply for the job as it existed. And so in order to expand that candidate pool, I wanted to slightly adjust that job description and bring it in front of the board for approval, for the, the point of process. I do believe that this will actually attract a very diverse pool of candidates and it'll position the district not only to continue the excellent service that Mr. Burns provided, but it will also allow for that strategic leadership, for our drill preparedness and our emergency preparedness to increase and to have that oversight.
Just a question, because I genuinely don't know. Kevin was able to carry a weapon. Was that because he's an active police officer? Would the, would the retired police officer also be able to do that on a school premises? I just don't know.
Yeah, yeah, he was a sworn police officer.
Right.
A retired officer could get Act 235 certification, which would allow him to carry a firearm. Anyone that's approved by the superintendent can carry it.
Gotcha.
If we wanted them to.
Yeah, no, understood.
It's more of a supervisory position, not to hire the guys-
Yeah, I remember, yeah, that was part of the conversation last time. We wanted to, there were some folks who didn't want the, I guess the SRR or whatever is tied on, being to be armed, but he was. So it would be a change potentially there in responding to the kinds of-
Could go through the training and carry it.
Okay, got you.
Mr. Martin, if you look at the job description where it says education level, right, right next to it, it's, you, all the way at the end, it says required or preferred. There's an X for preferred, so it's not required.
I see what he's looking at. It just said four related, you know, and then period, masters preferred.
Yeah, but then if you look at the end, it says, if you look at the end, it just says preferred, not required.
Is this a Peasars position?
Mr. Green, would that be Peasars eligible? I'm assuming, yes, if you're employed, it is eligible for Peasars.
Yes. Why don't you just take the current one and take out the one little piece that's offensive to everybody to having a certain certification? Just do it the way it is. Remove that one little thing and you're done.
The certification, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's offensive. I think what it is, it's just a barrier to attracting more applicants.
That could just be removed from what we currently have, couldn't it?
Well, there's the other piece, and that is, is that the position as authored originally didn't have some of the, the leadership and, and training aspects of it. And one of the things that we would like in this position to include is that strategic oversight, the ability to do safety audits of our district, the ability to provide leadership training for our security staff, the ability to do emergency preparedness and training. We want to make sure that all of our buildings, all of our staff, all of our students are as well-versed in our protocols, that liaison with law enforcement and first responders, and also just building up the resources and the training and the collaboration with those drills, hazard preparedness, all of those things. And so to add a little bit more strategic oversight and then just make sure that our job description matches the expectations that we have for that. There was nothing that was offensive, it was just more of increasing the ability for great candidates to be eligible to apply.
I would think that these, the candidates have all this already in their background, so that it's nothing more difficult than was where they were coming from, except it's a supervisory position. Like they are capable or they may have been management positions before they retired, et cetera. So, you know, all that training, et cetera, I think it was in their background already. Thank you.
Can we move on to a vote then? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? Passes six, two. Before we move on, I would like to welcome Dr. Sacron, you know, as our new assistant superintendent, so he is now working for us. Welcome. Going on to presentations, we have two of them. First, the K summer reading, take-home book pack. This is Mealy.
Hello. Thanks, Chris. Am I able to then click through here? Yeah, perfect. Excellent, so we are going to get right to it. As you know, each year, over the past several years, we have been sending home book packs for our K5 students to support summer reading. And so each year, we also bring to you the results of the opt-out survey that was shared before the book packs are sent home, as well as the thought exchange results that we collect to improve this process for future years. As you also know, this is not part of the budget for this coming school year, so we are here just to present the results and ensure you that we are looking into other options for funding this, so that we can still continue to build home libraries, because we do believe it's crucial and, and critical for our students. And so the opt-out survey that we sent in, I guess that was May, before we sent home the book packs, we had seven students total out of 2,472 elementary students. Seven were opted out, less than, way less than even a half of a percent, .28%. Those seven students came from six families and they were actually all from McDonald Elementary. You can see the response breakdown by grade level. And so from our thought exchange, again, we posed the question, reflecting on the book packs circulated this past summer, what are some of the ways it added value to your child's summer experience? If we were to provide books to students again in the future, what would you like for us to consider? We had a total of 76 participants that wrote in 42 thoughts. We had a very high increase in the number of ratings, even from last year, a 76% increase in the amount of times someone who participated in the survey rated another thought as something that they agreed with. We also have had an increase, a steady increase over the past three years that I've been involved with presenting the results of this for those family members or families in our district who use the translation services that are built into the thought exchange. So it's gone up steadily, 3% each year, I believe, or, so we have up to four languages, three in addition to English now being used in that survey. And they, if you can't see them, are Ukrainian, Russian, and Spanish. This breaks down then the participation for this survey by the buildings and grade level. And then overall, we like to show the satisfaction, so we do have in there, overall, how satisfied were you as the parent with the topics, content, and/or themes of the books in the book packs? We had 79% of parents and guardians who answered and responded to this survey that were satisfied or somewhat satisfied, very or somewhat satisfied, leaving 21% that were not. Overall, how satisfied were your students? As we know, we are not able to survey minors, so we asked their parents, how satisfied were your students with the topics, contents, and/or themes of the books? 72% of parents or guardians who responded said that their children were satisfied with the summer book packs. We like to break down the top three key thoughts for both successes and areas for opportunity. So the top three are listed here. Very thoughtful to get these books, keeps kids interested in reading. New books that a student didn't already have, and books that were geared towards that comment in the middle there is kind of an area for opportunity as well, geared towards the reading level and that the student could read by themselves would be helpful. And then we love finding new books, authors, series to read. We read together every night and it's nice to have new options. The next several slides break down then those key areas or themes that came out of. So you have had a chance to read through this. If there's anything you would like to ask questions about, you're welcome to. But one of the thoughts was just books, it's nice to have books for our students at home, which is the purpose of our summer book packs, to build that home library and ensure that every student has access to it. Another was, another theme was that it keeps kids engaged. Another theme, it keeps kids reading over the summer. One parent commenting and having very high likes to that comment was reading makes a great person or makes a person great. And then the idea that it's nice to continue that learning over the summer. So our overall summary, again, 76 participants, 53 who actually took home the book packs. So some of the parents are incoming kindergartners' parents who completed the survey, and they were not here to receive those book packs. 79% again were very or somewhat satisfied, leaving 21% of the participants somewhat or very dissatisfied. Strengths, overall, this initiative was valued as a resource that maintained reading interest and reinforced skills over the summer break. It promoted discovery of new books, authors, and series, which engaged students and motivated them to read throughout the summer. And the content inspired additional activities like trips to the zoo. Opportunity areas for the future, increase the levels of interest and also multicultural representation. And we have a note there in blue, just to remind you that the Office of Teaching and Learning does not solely choose these books, they are chosen by representative groups of students from the Student Advisory Councils, parents from the Parent Advisory Council, teachers, administrators, and school board members. And another area for opportunity was some parents expressed regret for not receiving the book pack, and a note that that's likely those incoming kindergarten parents.
Any questions for Mrs. Mealy?
If I might. I used to spar at Mr. Gabriel, so now- Well, am I interpreting this right, that we gave out 2,400 packets of books to students?
Correct.
Well, I also correct that 53 parents out of 2,472 took the time and chose to respond, those who responded responded well, but 53 out of 2,472, by my William Tenet math, is about 2%.
76, but yes.
So any survey and any project that spends 40-some thousand dollars, and 2% of the parents chose to respond to- parents chose to respond to it, although those 2%, 79% of them liked it, so that's 1.5% liked it, that doesn't seem to me, and I'm all for reading, trust me, I love to have people read, doesn't seem to be a very successful program that I would be interested in continuing based on that response level of interested parents.
So, and I will respectfully just point out again that seven students out of those 2,500 almost students were opted out, saying that they did not want to receive the summer book packs.
Right, I get that.
Showing interest.
Everybody wants something that's free, if it's free, they're gonna take it, whether they want it, use it, and don't care, they liked it so much, they didn't want to take two minutes to respond to the survey.
So, and I will also say, we have sent this out at different times of the year, if you might recall, last year, we did not send, we sent the survey in October, we have sent the survey in October, busy time of year, and we also know the human element of completing surveys, we usually complete a survey when we're dissatisfied with something, at least, that's how I usually, I try, I try, I am a positive person, I try to do it when I'm really happy to. Actually, I just got a email today saying that I had three Google surveys that I completed, and they were all positive.
Thank you for not putting it in your budget, appreciate that.
Let me just say, in this process, we pretty much had the same conversation during our education committee, it is a concern, you know, but it is also valuable to see these books go home, but it is a concern, and we also kind of toyed with how we're gonna move forward, we don't really have a plan yet. Mike Hartline?
Okay, so, how does this translate into our next presentation with the summer slide that we see? Are we seeing a return on our investment by sending these books home, and are we historically seeing that since we have been doing this, that the summer slide seems to be plateauing or lessening?
You will, I don't want to ruin it, but spoiler alert, you will see that our returning students are coming at above the national benchmarks in each grade level, aside from kindergarten, who are incoming and were not supplying book packs to them.
But I'm not so much concerned about national trademark as I am concerned about year-over-year-over-year for our children. Now that we have been doing this for several years, are we seeing a significant bump, or have we plateaued in that response?
So, we, and we're seeing both, and again, another spoiler, but we're seeing both growth and achievement in different areas, and maybe a spoiler for November when we see those state scores as well, we are seeing, do we have direct correlation to, this is it, this is certainly a contributing factor.
Are we having any of our teachers plan lessons around some of the books that were sent home to see whether or not the students actually read them, or whether or not they just became book fodder?
So, we have a very robust, rigorous curriculum at K-5 in Witten Wisdom, so we are using our instructional time to build our knowledge and our learning through those, so no, we are not going back, and, and one of the reasons that we brought in the summer book packs as the summer reading was because we gained feedback from parents and insight and input that they don't want to be tied to having to do this and then being checked on it when they come back, they want the option, right? And, yes, everyone likes something that's free, but we're getting it in there anyway, we're sneaking it in, we're sneaking in that summer reading, and it's, it is benefiting. Books make great people, right? It's helping to build, and it's building the libraries of our children at home, which we know helps with, the article last year, every child needs a home library, it really helps to build, even if their parents are not parents that went through full education, it helps to build that child's, make it a level playing field for them.
So, to build on the what is next, what can we possibly do next, seeing that more and more children are becoming digital-based, is there a cheaper alternative to this by doing it on a digital platform that we can then also track to see how these students actually log on, how many of them really are doing it, and we can get some more hardcore data other than simply a participatory feedback?
So, we are exploring other options, that being one of them, yes, and we will bring back to you what we find.
Do they have their devices through the summer?
They do have the option to take, they have the option to not take it home, really, so yes, they're all sent home unless their parents opt out of taking it home, so.
That's interesting, I mean, I, you know, I agree with the goals, the statistics that are here, they always look nice, but I think it's the, we keep looping the conversation because if there's a better way to get more substantive data out of the impact of the program, great, it's just the sample size is so small compared to the student population that it may look good, but it's not really, it's not entirely convincing that it's representative of the experience or the impact that it's having. I agree with the sentiment of the article you mentioned, I agree with a lot of the different things, but it ultimately adds up to something circumstantial, and I think we're looking for something, you know, four or five, however many years in, is there something we can really hang our hat on and go, we can show, is there a better way to measure it? Can we have, you know, direct conversations with, you know, with some of the students or parents or something? I know it's more work than sending the survey, but just something to try to get more raw data out of the district to see if we can really show the impact in a more realistic way. But thank you.
I know how difficult it was to get AP children to do summer work, let alone elementary school children, you know, to read or to do something as opposed to playing, so.
I'm sure that this is gonna drive to more and further discussions in our education committee. If nothing else, we're gonna move on to...
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Fall 2025 local data assessment?
You're welcome.
Review?
No, I don't know.
Mr. Hartline?
Oh, that was, oh, thank you, I'm sorry. All right, waiting for the next, there we go, presentation to queue up, all right. Hi, everybody, it's good to see you, lagging a little bit from last night's 18-hitting baseball game, sorry, but I wanted to share our local, our local data. This is, remember back to last year's, we're gonna kind of bookend some data in October, November, I'm here tonight to share the fall local assessment data in DIBELS, iReady, and iXL, and Mr. Hartline, more fuller picture will present itself in November when we share the state data, the PVS growth and achievement with that, but this is going to focus on our local data. I'm going to get to the heart of the presentation here for time, again, we're gonna look at DIBELS, iReady, and iXL. We'll start with DIBELS, which is K-3, some things going on here, we've got kindergarten 1, 2, and 3, we have the beginning-of-the-year benchmark, that's the gold line, in the highlighted box is the number, we wanted to put a number to that, and I'll explain that in a moment. The blue bar represents our students' benchmark score on the fall benchmark of DIBELS, and the green diamond that you see above the blue bar will be the middle-of-the-year benchmark goal, and that, that assessment window is between December 1st and December 22nd, so that's when we'll be taking that. A note here, I'm gonna break this down by grade level, we'll now break, this was big picture, K-1, 2, 3, I'm gonna go grade by grade now, I do want to add a note here, what the benchmark is, you'll see the narrative box on the right side, just wanted to clarify that the composite score is not a percentage, it's a scaled score, I wish I had a better way to explain it to you, it's an algorithm that DIBELS uses by taking some of the underlying scores, reading fluency, oral reading fluency, letter naming, and they bibbidi-bop it into an algorithm and spit out a scaled score, and that's the number you see here. Our national benchmark score for this year was 306, it's the national benchmark, so you can see where kindergarten is falling with that, and the note at the bottom that I have here is that you can see that kindergarten for two of the last three years, our kindergartners are coming in under the national benchmark, one year was above, and this has been a trend that we are watching, that we're seeing nationally, and we're now seeing it, we're also seeing it here in Centennial. For first grade, the beginning-of-the-year national benchmark is 330, we have three-year trend line of first grade with students, all three different grade-one cohorts, being above the beginning-of-the-year national benchmark. Again, this is evidence that our supports are having a positive impact on student outcomes. Grade 2, the national benchmark was a 329, you can see where we are for this year, and we're above, again, the national benchmark for second grade, three years running, and 332 here for grade 3, again, three-year trend line that we are, third graders are above the national benchmark for DIBELS. I'm not gonna read all this at you, okay, but just want to emphasize the evidence-based supports that we started putting in in 2019, 2020, continued putting in for several years, and continue to maintain these supports, which supports the growth that we are seeing. I am now going to turn to iReady in both ELA and math, and the lovely triangle that we've seen for years, this is NTSS, the tiers of support. Again, just a refresher, this is a rule of thumb, tier 3 is two or more grade levels below, it usually encompasses 5% to 10% of students in a school district, tier 2, one grade level below, anywhere between 15% and 20%, and tier 1 at or above grade level, which usually encompasses 75% to 80% of students. Again, this is a rule of thumb, guidelines, guardrails for these numbers. For K-8 reading, this is where we fell in for our fall assessment, in tiers 3, 2, and 1, the graphic, the triangle shows that 75% of our K-8 students are in tier 1 or 2, and 2, for reading, with 25% in tier 3 as reflected on their beginning-of-the-year benchmark, their diagnostic assessment. Also added a narrative box to the right of the screen of the chart that you see here, wanted to make clear to everyone here and watching at home, please allow me to read this out loud, the reading, the iReady assessment is aligned to the Pennsylvania state standards, all of our assessments are, which outline what students should know and be able to do by the end of each grade. This means that when students take the iReady assessment in September, they're actually being measured against the end-of-year expectations. So, as teachers, we know this, that whenever we get our standards, when I was teaching 9th grade English, and I'm looking at my English standards for my students, their end-of-year expectations, where the state expects students, what they expect them to know and be able to do when they get to the end of the school year, I just wanted to point that out for everyone. Our trend line for iReady reading, over the last three-year window, our tier 3 numbers continue to decrease, which is good news, we're moving kids into tier 2, and our tier 1 numbers, there's been some fluctuation but have generally stayed steady. For K-8 math, we have 77% of our K-8 students are in tiers 1 and 2 for math, with 23% in tier 3 as reflected in their beginning-of-year diagnostic, the narrative note is to the right of the chart, again, students are being measured against end-of-year expectations. This has been our trend line for the last three years for K-8 math, our tier 3 numbers continue to decrease, tier 2 has remained somewhat steady, and tier 1 numbers have increased over the last several years. Again, I'm not gonna read this at you, but this is a very comprehensive list of the evidence-based supports that we continue to put in and support. I want to move on to iXL, which will cover reading, language arts, and also mathematics, I have a special note about that in a moment. This is looking at reading for grade 9 only, this is a three-year trend, to your left, you'll see a box in blue, just to clarify that a score of 900 within the iXL platform equals on-grade level for 9th grades, so think of 9th grade as 900. Also, the note to the right is very similar to the note I shared about iReady, iXL diagnostic is aligned to state standards, and they provide what's called a working grade level, I have that in quotes, again, the expectations are end-of-year expectations, so students in 9th and 10th grade hop on iXL, get assessed in reading and language arts, they're being assessed on state standards with the end-of-year expectation, and this is where we fell, you can see that across, that this year's grade 9 cohort, all of their beginning-of-the-year categories, assessment scores, all increased in comparison to last year's 9th grade cohort. 10th grade, this is 10th grade only, a score of 1,000 would equal on-grade level for grade 10. Again, we had similar increase in all areas except for writing, writing had a small dip for this year's cohort, 10th grade cohort, as opposed to last year's cohort. For mathematics, we have both of them on the same screen, for algebraic thinking was only grade 9, we had an increase in the algebraic thinking score from last year's cohort to this, grade 10 in geometry had a slight decrease from last year's cohort into this year's cohort for geometry. Again, these are the evidence-based supports, I did want to make one note, that first bullet under assessment, this is the first year that we've had 9th and 10th grade only, we are not assessing after 10th grade, so no 11th or 12th grade, we've had very open and honest conversations, both in Ed Committee and with the full board, of the last several years of data showing the decrease once students enter 11th grade, post Keystone testing, motivation, engagement, some difficulty, some challenges in capturing data, because once students hit 11th grade, they're exposed more to a number of electives, you remember us sharing last year that we were not capturing every student, because they weren't in a core class, they were in electives especially in ELA, so I just wanted to share that with the group. We continue to strengthen our assessment systems, PSC and Keystone exam data will be shared in November, we just shared our DIBELS, iReady, and iXL, and in progress, under construction, we continue to build out our common assessments, our classroom curriculum-based assessments, that work continues. Just some takeaways and trends, just to summarize tonight's presentation, the data reveals a district steadily improving in academic growth and instructional consistency, some reasons for that, positive impact of evidence-based supports, especially in K-3 reading, our tier 2 growth and instructional focus, our decreasing need for intensive intervention, it's often said that when you're increasing your core tier 1 instruction, the need for tier 3 intervention starts to decrease, and our curricular coherence continues to drive gains, our robust supports, especially our coaches, our reading and math specialists, and the personnel that we have, OTL and Student Services. I did add this in here, because many of you picked this up, we've talked about this at Ed Committee, an area for further exploration, the decline in kindergarten readiness, these are external factors, but the team, both in OTL and Student Services, are looking for opportunities that we can move forward in strengthening that early learning readiness for students coming into the district. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I think you summarized it well, you know, and, you know, I can almost like move right on into, you know, the Education Committee report.
Thank you.
And really, the two items that we talked about was these two presentations.
Yes.
And then finally, you know, the discussion about the World History, you know, program.
Correct. Yep.
That was really what took place in the Education Committee, plus, we recommended the six items for approval tonight, that's on the agenda, that's the Education Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Thank you.
Mr. Hartline? All right. Turn my mic on here. All right, education, our Education Finance Committee was a little light this month, but we still had a meeting anyway. The couple things on the, for presentation tonight are the budgetary timeline, which is obviously based upon the election calendar as it is every year. The Act 1 index, there's a report of that, there are some school districts that actually have a higher Act 1 ability than other school districts in the county, based upon some external factors. We also went over the monthly Pennsylvania State Liquid Asset Fund, we're still getting an average of about 4% on our investments, we did talk about the state budget that is still non-existent. Additionally, I had a conference call with Heather Briggs from Clifton Larson &amp; Allen, they are our auditing firm, as a follow-up to the presentation that was made the previous month, and some auditing questions, et cetera, they are currently actively working on the next audit, so that should be forthcoming as... should be forthcoming as well. They apologized once again for the last one being tardy. And one of the things that did come out of our discussion was the possibility or the concept of setting up some type of a hotline or email address for fraud or inconsistencies that might be being seen in the district. It's something I've already talked to administration about, and we're trying to mull over some ideas about how we can possibly do that. Some other school districts in the area are already doing it, so, you know, let's not reinvent the wheel here. Let's look at what they're doing. But it is something that they had suggested, that they are seeing trends across the state and across the country with setting up those types of information networks, and it's something that they would like us to consider. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hartline. Mr. Ginhardt, Operations?
Okay, Operations met on October 17th. Mr. Wartman gave us an update on projects underway, the biggest one being that the controller boards for the HVAC and McDonald are in service. Their systems are solid and working well. The other big thing was we got a presentation on the need to purchase new school buses, which is down lower in the Operations Committee section. I'd like to compliment Mr. Wartman, giving us a really detailed, quality presentation, laid out very well what we needed, what we need to look at. And while we're on the subject of the buses, also like to compliment Mr. Wartman, because just like with tobacco, when he got the initial bids, he looked at them and went, nope, don't like it, not doing it too high. So, we bid it and got us some lower prices on the buses. So, we're going to be, you know, looking at saving money on things that we need. And the next meeting is November 14th at 11 o'clock.
Thank you. Mr. Goddickson?
All right. Back to the Education Committee. We have just had the presentation, so there are no more presentations. We have six items for approval, and we moved them all together. Seeing so, we resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.2A approves the purchase of books for the Reading Olympics and the Davis Elementary Library. District cost not to exceed $428.83. 6.2B approves the purchase of books for the Klingon Mill School Library. District cost not to exceed $904.99. 6.2C approves the purchase of books for the Reading Olympics and the McDonald Elementary Library. District cost not to exceed $631.62. 6.2D approves the purchase of books for the Reading Olympics and the Will Dell Elementary Library. District cost not to exceed $1,460.39. 6.2E approves the overnight conference request for the instructional coaches and Mrs. Colletti to attend and present at the Standard Align Systems Institute Conference, December 8th and 9th, 2025, in Hershey, PA. District cost not to exceed $1,439.05. 6.2F approves the William Tennant World History Lessons Pilot Study. No cost to the district.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ginhardt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? As is 8-0.
All right. Finance Committee, does anybody have any questions regarding the three items that are on for presentation? Seeing not. 7.2, does anybody wish to have either one polled, or can I group them together? All right, I'll group them together. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 7.2A approves the attendance of the Foods and Nutrition Manager at the PASBO Food Service Conference and Exhibition, November 18th, 19th, 2025, Mannheim, PA. District cost not to exceed $525. 7.2B approves the agreement with the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, number 22, to coordinate the district's required homestead exclusion notice in December 2025 at an estimated cost of $1,078, $1.078 per parcel. Estimated cost to the district is $4,005.
Second?
Second by Mr. Sodowsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes 8-0.
Mr. Hartline? Items presented for information, none. 8.2, does anybody want anything polled?
8.2B and 8.2C.
Okay. Okay. How about we just take these one by one then? Okay. 8.2A approves the rejection of bid 2026-01 for two 30-passenger buses.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. 8.2B approves the purchase of two 2025 microbird 30-passenger buses from Brightville Body Works. District cost not to exceed $209,990. Pricing is per the Sourcewell contract 102115BBB.
My question is this, we've talked about how much money we don't have. Where's this money coming from to pay for these buses? And that would be the same as for 2D or 8.2D? We're in such, in deficit now here.
I understand. So, just like capital projects, this money was approved in the budget. It was actually $650,000 was approved in the budget that you all approved. It's in the capital plan, so it can't be brought back into operations, so it just sits there if we don't, you know. We do need buses. We have buses that are extremely old, and we have some that we say are usable now that aren't going to be usable for much longer because they're going to, at some point soon, they're rusting, the bus is going to pull away from the frame, and they won't be able to be used again. So, that money has already been approved in this year's budget and is sitting there. So...
Okay. So, 8.2, can I get a second?
Yes.
No, 8.2B. Did I get a second?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. 7-1. 8.2C approves the rejection of bid 2026-02 for one 72-passenger bus. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Sodowsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes 8-1, I mean 8-0, I'm sorry. 8.2D approves the purchase of one 2025 Bluebird Vision 72-passenger bus from Brightville Body Works. District cost not to exceed $121,600. Pricing is per the Sourcewell contract 063020BBB. Thank you, Mr. Sodowsky. All those in favor?
Wait, can I ask a question? You said that the funding for this is already allocated towards this, and it can't be brought back into the general fund? Is that...
That's correct.
So, it has to sit there until...
As a part of our refreshment plan. Yep.
Yeah, this is, this is part of that, like, ongoing, we're refurbishing, we're replenishing the bus supply as we can, rather than get hit with, oh, four of our buses broke down, and we have to suddenly buy eight in one year, kind of plan. We've been working on it for the past several years. It's just that we're getting to the point with two of the buses that...
And we are. And we are required, once we move money into certain funds, that it is allocated towards whatever those funds are dedicated towards, capital improvements, you know, operations, whatever have you.
So, it stays there until we put it to the buses?
It's in that, that savings for that. And it is something that we use on a reoccurring basis as well.
Thank you.
Question, are they, will they become equipped with the radio and all?
Yes.
And stuff?
Fully equipped. They'll be, they'll put on a B-list to put the bus patrol in it and everything. They'll be outfitted just like our current buses.
And what would be your timeline if this is approved now to go?
These are buses that are readily available. It won't be January, February, March when we get them like we would if we went to a lot of the bids. These are, these are buses that are sitting on the lot, that they're ready to move. So, we're, they, they will outfit them, and we'll get them probably within a month.
And they're coming in under bid from the original bids?
Yes. Yes. Yep. So, the second one, just going back out and asking other questions and finding other sources cost, are saving us almost $3,000 on that bus, and the other two is $3,300 combined, so.
Great job.
These, was it the propane buses we were going to?
No, these are not.
Regular, these are regular. Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Me. Any abstentions? Motion passes 7-1. 8.2E awards bid 2026-03 for two 2025 nine-passenger Ford F-350 vans to Sands Ford. District cost not to exceed $123,800. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Me. Any abstentions? Motion passes 7-1. 8.2F awards bid 2026-04 for one Ford T-350 HD Transit van to Sands Ford. District cost not to exceed $54,720. Second? Second by Mrs. Grossen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Me. Any object, any abstentions? Motion passes 7-1. Are there any board comments, Mr. Hartline?
Just that Friday is Halloween, so watch out for all the kiddies and others that are out on the streets.
Yep. And if a kid comes to your door, even if they don't have a costume, keep in mind that they're still being a kid instead of maybe some other things they could be doing. And some kids can't afford a costume, or some kids can't handle wearing a costume. So, please be kind and just give them the candy. We're giving out the good, we're giving out the full-size bars at our house. Mr. Brancato is praying that we don't get a lot of trick-or-treating. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm a candy artist.